And we've had sort of tentative agreement to have that there would be a joint meeting with the planning board about this timeframe each year. And I think it will be, I think we'll see as we go through the agenda that this is a useful thing to make the work, the planning board and town council work together on a lot of things, but not always in close communication, and this is a way that will help to align that. So to get started tonight, I'd like to, we can start with Janice and just kind of move around everybody for an introduction because we don't necessarily know each other at this moment.
Oh, my name is Janice Roldan, on the planning board, and I'm in Newmarket since 2003.
Well, I'm a member, just because I'm, I am, this is my first year, I've been living in Newmarket for six years.
Daniel Lewis, Meltonet, I've lived in Newmarket for almost three years now, and I've been on the planning board since March.
We'll do set, I'm new to the planning board, I've been in Newmarket since I think 1992 or 93.
Diane Hardy, I'm the town planner, I've been with the town of Newmarket 12 years, and I look forward to working with the council and the planning board on some of the initiatives that we're going to talk about this evening, thank you.
Al Shelton, I currently serve as the vice chair of the planning board, I think this is my third term on the board, and I've been a lifelong resident of Newmarket.
Dale Pike, I'm currently chair of the Newmarket Town Council, and I've lived in Newmarket since 99.
Steve Fornier, I'm the town administrator, and I've been here six years.
Hi, I'm Tony Weinstein, and I'm on the town council, this is my second term on the council, I've lived in Newmarket for almost 20 years now.
I'm Amy Burns, I'm on the town council, this is my second term, and I've lived in Newmarket for almost nine years.
I'm Kyle Bowden, I'm town council, I've been in Newmarket for 14 years and two months.
Casey Finch, town council, I've been in Newmarket for five years now.
Gretchen, excuse me, Gretchen Cass, town council, but I'm also a council member on the planning, planning board, I've been in Newmarket since 1999.
My name is Zachary Dumont, I have been in Newmarket since 2014, I am six months into my first term on the town council, and very new to the process, so forgive me for my lack of knowledge.
Okay, so at this point, we have an agenda of four items to discuss in the next 55 minutes, and I'm going to turn it over to our town administrator to begin the discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, really the first two items sort of roll into each other. The first, town councilor this year set their goals for policy for the coming year, and one of the areas that they want, they highlighted and that wants the staff to work on is to begin the redevelopment of the three gateways areas in Newmarket, and those gateways are 108 North, which would be North Main Street, where it's currently construction, 108 South, Exeter Road, and the 150, Route 152 gateway in the west. The first part of that would be North Main Street, as you know, the state has been redeveloping the streets up there to add sidewalks as well as bike lanes, and we, the town upgraded all the utilities underneath to make it more attractive for, to locate businesses in that area. Our goal would be to examine what, what's best up there, what best fits in the area. Some of the discussion has been some mixed use, to sort of continue the development of the downtown north, and to continue, continue the connection that way. As for the 108 gateway south, it's probably, probably similar situation with mixed use in that area, or whatever seems to be best, and then the 152 area, it would probably be the trickiest one at this point. There's a lack of utilities out in that area, as well as some sensitive aquifers. But we're, as a, as staff for the town, are just trying to figure out what, what's best for that area, and work with the two boards to see what we can do in that area. One of our goals is to actually bring on a consultant to assist us with examining basically that, what does the market hold, what could fit in those areas, as well as what changes in the zoning would we have to make to do that. We've met with Stu Arnett, who's actually in the audience this evening, just to kind of get an idea of what services do economic development consultants provide, and our next step would be to actually issue an RFP to assist us with that, as well as other economic development projects that we may come up with. You know, Diane's very busy on other projects, not only the planning board and zoning board, but administering grants, as well as EMS Ford process and assisting with that.
And the dam.
And the dam, can't forget about the dam. I get the ads for that, too. So I guess, her time is just spread very thin, and so that's why we're looking at getting consulting help, and also it's good to get an outside view, too. Us being here every day and seeing the in and out, sometimes we, we need somebody else from the outside to say, hey, look, this is the more realistic approach to do something. So my intention is, within the, probably the next two weeks, to issue an RFP for economic development services, to get proposals back and bring it to the town council for an ultimate approval, so we can begin this process. We're going to be working hand in hand with the planning board, because if we need any zoning changes, we need to work with the planning board to make sure it fits what the master plan and what the overall plan is for the community. Questions, am I missing?
Well, I was going to say, I think it's important to recognize, of the three gateways, in a way that the planning board, because I was on a subcommittee with the planning board for a while, and a lot of the discussions go back to economic development and ideas of what to do out on 152, but I, you know, in a way you could say, wow, this is a slow process, but I feel like it's sort of, it's, you know, personally, I think it's better to be right than it is to be fast on some of these things, you know, you have an aquifer out there that's, that's sensitive, you want to be sure you get to the right place, so I, I think part of what we've gone through is, you know, if we, if we provided water and sewer, if we made some commitment to bring water and sewer out there, would we, how much control would we have over the kind of development that went in, and how, well, how would that impact our ability to protect the aquifer? And, and also, how, how would you approach that, you know, there's certain kinds of development, and we've had consultants that have made recommendations before that a continuing care retirement community type of development might provide favorable economic impact in terms, to the town, in terms of tax revenues, and, but some of those assumptions have been, you know, have, have developed to be a little more questionable than we initially thought because of, you know, some of these are nonprofits, and that their tax status is different. So I think, I think that's kind of part of what we're about for this evening tonight, is to make sure people understand somewhat about what the discussions have been, and it's sort of a chance for people on both sides, both planning board and town council, to weigh in on how they would approach the question, because in the end, that, we're going to have to move at some, at something.
Just may add something, and one of the, also with the discussions, CCRC, is that the right area? You know, we have two areas in town that are, that we looked at for CCRC, which is that 152, as well as off of New Road, however, part of the discussion that's come up recently is, well, but by doing so, you're also isolating the people who live in those communities, because it's not pedestrian friendly, it's not easy to get to, you know, bicycle, cars, walking, whereas if you put it closer to town, it may be easier, you know, people can just walk downtown, where there's already infrastructure for pedestrians. So that's also part of the discussion that we probably need to have at some point in the near future, where is the best location for it? Is it that, the, the two areas that we've already highlighted are somewhere else?
Well, and along with that is the profitability of where we're developing as a community, you know, and looking at it from an economic standpoint of the cost of bringing services out to different areas, and then as Dale pointed out, in the CCIC, from the Economic Development Committee work that was done, seemed to be the most cost effective for the community, but not if the entity coming in would be a nonprofit, because there would be the issue of whether or not taxes would be paid, you know, for that use of the land. From a planning perspective, we also are seeing now that on the 152 corridor, there's been a couple of instances where landowners, that's all currently zoned, commercial, industrial, and landowners have received zoning board approvals, because they can't utilize the land as it is currently zoned. And now you have, will be left with some very large parcels, some of which have been on the market for a while, they have no redevelopment potential, so you have the ability, you have the possibility of more landers going through the zoning board process, because they can't utilize their land economically. So we really do need to look at what the town wants as a whole on that 152 corridor. And then as town administrator pointed out, on, relative to the, the north corridor and the south corridor, we have rezoned the southern gateway coming in, M2A, so that is mixed use now, under certain criteria. We really haven't seen anything come of that yet, we have approved one project, a good project, but they haven't been able to get funding to move forward with it, so it'd be good from an economic development consulting standpoint to look at that area, to say, why, you know, is what we adopted under zoning actually not enough to entice redevelopment of the south gateway? And then with all of the infrastructure that, that the town has committed to in the state on the north end, you know, how does that, how should that be rezoned, if it needs to be, in order to kind of bring in more economic viability, you know, viability and tax dollars on the north end of the town? And the planning board can deal with the zoning end of that, but what we also would need, need to understand is, you know, are there additional costs from the town? I mean, you've got the Bay Road sewer pump station, you know, if there is, you know, a, a large influx of, of usage on the north gateway, is, does that need to be upgraded? Is the town prepared to do that, or is there some kind of development scheme that should be, you know, looked at up, you know, on that side of north, you know, North Main Street and Bay Road, like a profitable CCRC, that could pay that back? So that's, I think, a lot of two, a lot of why we need to work jointly, because we need to understand what the town goals are, as we embark on master plans, which we'll talk about later, as well as zoning or rezoning of different districts.
So yeah, it's sort of like three phases, it's, we need to figure out what's best, make a recommendation to the planning board with the economic development consultant, whoever that may be, to, what the current zoning, is it best for the community, and if not, what is, and what else can we do? Then work with the planning board to make sure we can change the, the zoning, or amend it to, so it fits what we, the goals of the community are, and then it comes back to us when we start marketing those properties, and those areas, so to start the development. So we're going to be working hand in hand over the next years to get this moving, but it's something that we need to kick off, and this is, this is it?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do any of the other planning board members have any thoughts or questions relative to economic development, or how we should be moving forward, or where we might be missing it? Bill, you look like you're just ready to grab the mic.
Actually, you may want to grab the mic and pull it down, though, because.
Tilt it towards you, Bill, that's what he's saying, it's, it's pointing, do you want it straight up, or? That's what he was trying for. Anybody on the town council have comments at this point? Councilor Bowden?
I have a question, or a thought, just looking at the different areas that we're discussing here, and thinking about the cost to bring facilities to the 152 area, is that going to be economically feasible for the town?
Can I just, that's one of the questions I think we'd like to get more information on, we really need to look at what the design, what, what the design and construction costs would be to extend sewer to the area, and whether or not the existing water infrastructure is adequate, or would that have to be upgraded as well? Would there have to be a looping of the water line to provide adequate fire flows to that location? And that needs to be, you know, costed out, if you will, and looked at in relation to various development scenarios, and what kind of potential tax revenue the town could expect to receive, to help amortize the costs over time. And we've looked closely at the CCRC concept, but there may be other concepts that may make more sense for that area. And so also part of this looking, is it feasible from a financial standpoint, but is it feasible from a political standpoint? I've heard some resistance from some of the neighbors in the area, that, you know, they kind of like the rural quality of that area, and if you extend sewer out to that area, there's going to be more and more increased development pressure, it is, as Mr. Fornier pointed out, a sensitive area because of the aquifer. So I think these, these are serious questions that have fiscal and environmental implications that we need to fully understand before we go forward with any policy changes at this point, that's my feeling, anyway. But yes, the cost estimates and the fiscal impacts would be part of perhaps some ongoing work looking at that area.
Yeah, we talked about the utilities on 152, but there's also infrastructure that we have to look at on South 108, that's a, traffic wise, that's a bottleneck, and it can be a safety issue. So, you know, we also have to look at what, what can we do working with the state to try to improve that issue, and for those who don't know, we had a run-in with the state for the last 10 years, over projects there, that ultimately, and ultimately ended up in a lawsuit between the town and the state, which we prevailed on, over the widening of that area. The state originally asked us to manage it, however, when it was delayed, never gave us additional funds to pay the additional costs of the construction, and we said, we're not paying it, because they were going to force us to pay it, so, and we ultimately won in court. But I think that's something else we have to look at in that area, are we adding more, say if we were, did you just purely business, are we adding more car stops in an area that already has a high density of vehicles? And it's, also, I don't have the complete accident reports in front of me, but anecdotally, from listening to the scanners and seeing the texts come in from when the ambulances and police cars roll to accidents, that's an area of higher accidents in the community. So it's just something we'd have to look at and work with the state ultimately.
108 is, or 152?
108.
108, south then.
Yeah, south then. North 108, North Main Street, bad side of 108, pretty prime right now to, to look for some economic development in that area, it's just we have to work with the people who live in the area, as well as what's best for the community.
If I may, does North 108 share the same traffic issues that South 108 has? Because I haven't noticed it personally, but I'm not sure if you have the data that would say.
We don't see the accidents up there.
Okay.
With the widening in the sidewalks, you're going to be taking a lot of the people who would be normally walking on side roads off.
Okay.
So traffic's going to be able to flow better, it's just, you don't have as many, I mean, you have a lot of side roads and side streets, however, people already have the mentality that if you're driving north, you're just leaving the downtown area, so you haven't reached, you're not speeding yet, and if you're coming into town, you start slowing down in that area, versus just the, the way the setup along the railroad tracks and the hill, and the visi, lines of visibility for some of the side streets on South 108, it's just, it's difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think the, one of the main differences between the north and the south areas of 108 is, is the development, that's, that's already there, and so, you know, people are trying to make a left, if you have to make a left out of Hershey, or make a left out of Bennett, at certain times of the day, is almost impossible. So I think that that's a big part of the problem.
Yeah.
You know, Rite Aid and, well, McDonald's, but.
I live there, it's an everyday nightmare.
Those businesses that are, that are there, too, you know, that causes a lot more traffic.
I think we're almost finishing up with one and two, did you, do we have a comment over here?
Yeah, I've got just a quick comment on that, so obviously there are limited resources, and it's, and it sounds like, just this very brief conversation, that 108, the traffic flow is a problem, and what we don't want is suddenly our community to be avoided. Route 152, the discussion out there makes me slightly nervous, because I've had some involvement in commercial entities looking at that area, and they did their assessment and found it wasn't viable for them, for whatever reason, but I think what makes me nervous is if, is if the community decides to invest, throwing, just throwing a number out, a million dollars to extend water and sewer. And economic development doesn't proceed as we kind of hoped, does it put the community in a, a little bit of a difficult situation where they try to get a return on that investment, and maybe lighten up their standards somewhat on what they'd like to see there?
I think that is our concern, that, that's why we want to have our outside assistants to say, guys, that, you just don't put the infrastructure in and assume you're going to get the best development possible out there, we got to make sure what fits for Newmarket, and what we can fit in our budget. We're going to have, we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be updated for water and sewer, so we got to, you know, balance both those priorities.
I just wanted to make a point, then, same thing with zoning, I mean, you can make zoning changes to allow a use, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, and as you pointed out, it's really based on what the market can support, and so forth. And that area was zoned in 1998, out on Route 152, and it was zoned for business and commercial, and we've heard from the property owners saying how frustrating it is that they haven't been able to sell their property for that purpose, and some of the uses that are out there currently are not exactly high tax yield uses in comparison to some of the other uses that the EDC has spoken of. So I just want to kind of preface this by saying, yeah, you can change the zoning, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, so you need to have, you need to have somebody who can facilitate the process and be a mover behind the development, which is part of.
And, and since that time, there's only really been two new entities, commercial entities developed on that end of town.
That's right.
I sort of want to add one thing, that, you know, economic development, I was in a community that had a boom of economic development, and as soon as that boom happened, they, everyone assumed their tax rate was going to drop, that they said, oh, you know, tax rate, economic development equals a drop in the tax rate, it doesn't. Economic development equals additional areas for, to us to get funds from, doesn't mean that they're going to have a, a, you know, you're going to see a reduction in tax rate, you're going to see either stabilization or a slower increase, it helps offset. So I think, you know, I just don't want one of those misconceptions out there, that if you build it, then everybody will save it, you know, have all these savings, it doesn't happen that way. But what you, so what you do is you try to develop what's best for the community, what the, what does the community need and want to make the, what their quality of life better? And that's what I think the, one of the big parts of economic development is. You know, when I first got here, the number one thing I heard was, I don't want to drive to Stratum, or Lee, or Exeter, or Durham to go to a market, and we were able to get a small market in here that you can go and do some grocery shopping, I think those are the kind of things that you have to look at for quality of life, is to make sure you can do a lot of the things in your own community without having to go somewhere else.
I was going to, let me get the mic here. I was remembering in the packet that we saw, I think in our goal setting, and it talked about the type, I think it was in that packet, one of the packets we've seen on the council, of what kind of jobs or enterprises are, you know, are in different kinds of towns, and maybe we want to revisit that a little bit, because I think maybe we're looking at specific types of things that are maybe a little bit larger, with in and out, a lot of in and out traffic, and there might be other alternatives to that, like people working from home, or smaller, you know, one or two type person outfits, maybe slightly off the main street, you know, and that might be a way to balance some of the, some of the concerns that we're, we're hearing or we're thinking of.
Well, I think it's a good segue into item number three on the agenda, because I think that's exactly what we're talking about as part of this process.
So I'll have Diane start that conversation.
As you all know, one of the charges of the planning board under the state RSAs is to update the master plan, and the planning board has, has, has a goal that it would like to at least update one chapter of the master plan every year. The last time the town had a comprehensive overhaul, if you will, of the master plan was in 2001, it was a comprehensive document that covered a lot of different areas, and some of those areas are mandated by state law, others are optional. We have sort of, we're sort of off track in terms of updating a chapter a year, so what we would like to do is work with the planning board. board to help to identify what the needs would be going forward and what our priorities should be going forward. And we actually, you know, had talked about possibly updating the transportation master plan since that's increasingly becoming of issue. And, but I wanted to just, you know, mention that that's something that the planning board needs to evaluate as goals for the new year and move forward to do some updating. About five years ago, the capital improvements program recommended that a special fund be set up, a capital reserve fund, for the purpose of updating the master plan. And every year, about $10,000 has been set aside. So at this point, we have about $50,000 available so that we could do or could start work on a comprehensive update. So I guess, I wanted to just kind of set the stage with that, that, you know, that's an activity that the planning board should be concerned about. And of course, it's, we want to have as open of a process as possible, and we look forward to the town council's participation in that process. Not too long ago, I think it was in 2014, we did a visioning session on a Saturday, or we had two Saturdays, I guess, and we convened a group of 30 or 40 people on a Saturday, and we did some brainstorming and some visioning exercises. And we came up with a visioning chapter for the master plan, which really was helpful in laying the foundation for the future land use plan. And we have made some progress in meeting the recommendations of the future land use plan, but certainly some of the issues we're talking about this evening, about, you know, promoting the gateway development and expanding opportunities for economic development, we're going to, you know, dovetail nicely with that work going forward. I do want to mention that we do have an economic development chapter in the master plan that was done in 2011. And it really, you know, it strongly recommends that the town embark on an economic development program and have a strategy for development and provide the resources and staff so we can move forward with some of the recommendations. And there is in that chapter, an action plan as well as an implementation plan, which identifies who in the community is responsible to implement that portion. What we haven't done, which we probably should have done, and maybe could be part of this meeting every year, is to have sort of an overview of, okay, well, here are the action items. What have we done? Are they still appropriate? If not, you know, how can we modify that and use that to provide a policy framework, if you will? And I guess, would it be appropriate time to ask Mr. Arnett to give us an overview of what, what does an economic development consultant do, Mr. Arnett? This is Stu Arnett. I'm sorry. I should have introduced him more formally than that. Stu.
Uh, back to the microphone.
And Stu is a former planner from the city of Claremont, I believe. He had his start in New Hampshire and worked for many years for the New Hampshire Department of Economic Development, which was part of the old agency called DRED, Department of Resources and Economic Development.
Which is always good for economic development.
He's a consultant. I'm glad they changed the name to something a little more palatable because that always sort of had a negative connotation. But Stu comes with a wealth of experience and expertise in this area, and he's worked with both, you know, municipal clients as well as private developers and understands the process and knows how to get things done. And so I invited Stu to come and talk with us, to share with us how a town like Newmarket could move forward with some of these initiatives. And Stu, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thanks. And try to be brief, which is always a challenge. But let me go backward before I go forward first. Congratulations for doing this. This is not a communication process that many of our kinds do, and it's really nice to see this communication happen on a regular basis. Also, it's really interesting to see, we've got such a really nice blend here of volunteers, leaders. Look at the generational splits, the number of years people have lived here. You have some newbies, you have some people who've come, been here for life and such. Again, that's not something we hear a lot. Oftentimes, you get the towns like this and it's, "I've been on the board for too long. I can't wait to get off until the next person, you know, we can't find anybody that, so you're doing something right." So congratulations for having that kind of communication. Also, when, first Diane, then Diane and Steve, and I talked, I said, "One of the things I want to make clear tonight is I'm here to help you answer questions, including why you may not want to use a firm because there's some reasons why you can do it otherwise." And that our mission statement is about better futures. And so we do economic development work, but we also do land use planning and redevelopment sites because I think you're seeing that by talking to each other here, a better future relies on both very good planning and land use regulations as well as change, what's called change development. Sometimes people use the term economic development to be, how do we get the same shopping opportunities as a town next door? And not much more than that. Some people, as Steve had mentioned, are saying, what do we do to reduce our tax rate? Certainly, new development keeps it from rising more or, or at least you can cap it. But I think if you're, I think I'm hearing everybody here saying, I hope you understand I'm saying it. I'm in the business of helping communities find their better future, not just, let's impact the tax rate. A couple of things on, if you're going to go out and look for help capacity, there's a range of options from making all of you work more, taking the volunteers here and elsewhere, and just being more specific as to tasking and setting up subgroups. And you've all worked, I'm sure, on a community of tasks here that do other things. There's no reason you can't do some of the things that's on your list. I took the agenda this morning, the agenda that Diane gave you earlier, and if you break your five things down, there's at least 15 different items in this, one through five, that are subsets. So you have a lot you're working with. So you have, you can go with the volunteer mode, you can go with in-house staff, part-time staff, full-time staff. You can better utilize, there's two sort of prepaid organizations that are out there already, your Regional Development Corporation and your Regional Planning Commissions. They both have skill sets. I've had a good fortune of running both of those at one time. And then you can go outside to not-for-profits, either existing ones or create your own, and use a private side, which would be a firm like ours, and there's certainly many others. Quite honestly, we don't like to do what they do well because, like, some of those organizations have access. They can be grant applicants, so we still have to run back through them. So we don't, we want to work with those sort of people and not work instead of. So there's a range of other things, and I would say, a conversation to have is what's the pros and cons. And even within the, your own staffing, there's, there's the part-time, full-time. And then there's the Industrial Development Authority option under RSA 162, which allows a community to set up a development authority that is connected to the town councils, we say, by a dotted line, meaning the council points to members, but otherwise they're somewhat independent so they can do a little bit of work without having everybody looking over their shoulder. Oftentimes, we go into communities, we say, what you ought to do is have probably two of the above. You probably ought to have some kind of a not-for-profit entity that can accept and apply for grants because that helps. But you ought to have some tentacle back to Town Hall because all roads eventually come through Town Hall, either through Steve's office, the finance officer, Diane's office, or Public Works. And so some of that is kind of a tactical question to do over time. And I think the other thing on, if you're shopping through the RFP process, one of the things I would suggest is that you go look for capacity and not for specific outcomes, but look for capacity to deal with planning and development issues or redevelopment issues or real estate issues. Deal with, have a proposal be a capacity proposal. And then, once you figure out who you like for capacity, buy your task with work orders. So instead of saying, "Boy, the next six months is exactly the work orders we think we want you to answer." You might want to say, "Let's figure out somebody who can answer a lot of questions and answers and bring teams together." Because two or three months in this, we might say, you know, "Task three just faded away, but task six that I hadn't thought of moved up on the scale." And a little bit of, as they say, the shameless promotion. One of the projects we like to show off is another municipality, we had a contract for seven, no, sorry, for several years, of which we had one contract, but we had 22 work orders. So as things came up, work orders had a date, had a budget, had a deliverable, and you either did it or you didn't come back again. And then when the work order was done, you go away until the next task comes up. So consider the capacity, consider that the capacity within your existing volunteer structure, you have a not-for-profit that's had some success, owns some real estate, has their own internal skills, which are great. You obviously have a sound leadership foundation to start with. You don't have a, you know, the planning board's over here and they never talk to the town, and they never talk to the school board. That's a great, trust me, that's not something you see everywhere else. And you do have, you know, you have a strong regional planning commission, you have a good regional, strong regional development corporation, you have chambers. Where Diane and I used to work, there are people at the state level that would help you with some things too. So one of the things that you really are looking for is the capacity to get things done by assembling others. So Diane asked me to talk about the options, and I just probably gave it more than you wanted to, but it somewhat depends on what you're, what you want to accomplish. And so I think that's the, and I think this list today is a really nice start. The three zones, the feasibility, the houses affect the master plan, those are all nice things to let somebody know, here's where you want to go. And then let the, tell people what, and then over time, let them answer the how they're going to pursue it. And by the way, this sounds like it's getting, you know, kudzu, and then, but tell everybody right up front, here's my budget. So you're going to, whatever you're going to dance on, dance on, on this floor that, and that's it. So they understand where you are too. And it's not a, every time you say, I mean, typically, a work order would have a budget and move on, but that can sound like it's a mission creep unless you say, "And by the way, our annual budget is, and we'll figure out what to do with it," just like you would control the other customer. So hopefully that was a good, helpful introduction.
It was very helpful. Thank you very much. And I think it's good for us, provided, there was a lot there that's, that's good to think about as we talk about this process. And I'd also, sort of, a comment I was going to make before was, when you were talking about the master plan, which is where we were, is that, you know, the future land use plan is a fairly recent process, completing the future land use plan. But I think even in that, we were at a point where, you know, I feel like it was completed, and yet there were things that were sort of not fully wrapped up. We were still talking about. I think you're always going to be, so I think it's a good time to sort of try to find, you know, extra help in catalyzing the kind of discussions we talk so we can, you know, move things forward. But I think, you know, I think it is a real important balance between getting the right kind of development. And also, you know, we've got sensitive areas. We've had a lot of work that's been done within Newmarket in the last few years at looking at things like groundwater, saltwater intrusion, climate change. And all of that is really fairly new information that's come to us. So there's a fair amount of synthesis in trying to bring that information to bear, move forward on our economic development, to have some movement on that, and find the right balance for the town. So.
So, just to circle back on that. So the master plan is one of the responsibilities of the planning board, and it basically is to set the direction for zoning and regulations that are adopted. So one thing we also have to be careful of is that as we look at adopting new zoning regulations, they can't be in conflict with particularly that maybe specific chapter of the master plan. So as we look at, and we'll get into it in a minute, the stormwater management and updating our regulations, we have to ensure that they're consistent with the water resources chapter of our master plan. It's the chicken and the egg. We may have to go back and put that as the priority and review that section, that particular chapter, making sure that that sets the direction for then how we want to draft the regulations. And then the council's role in that is that any zoning regulations that the planning board drafts and recommends, it has to be adopted and approved by the zoning board. So we also want to be, we also need to understand where the council's coming from because as in past instances, a lot of work goes into, you know, the drafting of regulations and getting them through the public process and approval. And we really, when we come before the council, we really need a forefront understanding that we're all on the same team and that all of a sudden, all this work that has been done, there's amendment after amendment on the council. And where it was fitting under the master plan, which is how it was adopted, may not be consistent as it goes through the council. So I think we always just need to understand what the council's goals and objectives are in making sure that they are also consistent with the town's master plan because that is a public input process, document. And then we can adopt from, you know, the draft regulations from there. So I think I just wanted to put that out there so everybody really has an understanding of how this all does circle back together.
I think, did you have more comments to make on number four? If there's no more comments to be made on agenda.
On the master plan, yeah. All says the master plan. Unless there are any questions?
Right. I think those are, that was a good summation, Val. Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So this is just about the development of, or the updates of the chapters for the master plan. You mentioned the transportation as an, as an option for, for update, and then also the, the water infrastructure chapter, and that we have $50,000 available. So if I remember right, is it about $10,000 per chapter that it, or around?
It varies. And, you know, we've, we've done it several different ways. We've been able to work closely with the Stratfor Regional Planning Commission. And of course, they have access to coastal program money through NOAA and funding through DES. And we've been able to piggyback those funds and make them available, you know, so that we could use them for master plan updates. I have not had any recent discussions with them. However, they do have a new executive director, Jennifer Seise, who's coming to your meeting in October, I believe. So that might be a segue, if you will, to get their interest in maybe working with us on some of the other areas, transportation. Another area that is feeling new in the last 10 years is there's now an opportunity to have an energy conservation chapter in your master plan. And Tony, I thought that would spark your interest because I know you're the chairman of that committee. But that might be an area that we might want to expand into as well, especially now that we have Greg Miles on board and he's doing some innovative things with energy savings and helping to finance those costs through various programs that are available. So that might be another area that we might have interest in, you know, updating. Again, I would defer to the planning board as to what their, their goals are. But it's about, you know, we had, we had been setting aside $10,000 a year. But again, it depends on funding sources. We have worked with private consultants before. We had a consultant come in who helped us with the chapter six, and he was sort of like a ghostwriter and worked with the economic development committee at the time and the planning board and put together that document for us or with us. So it's, and again, the planning commission has been very helpful in this area.
And I'm guessing that besides the financial piece of it, there's the capacity for what can happen over the course of a year through your office and through the planning board?
Well, you know, it's, I'll be honest, I'm stretched pretty thin. You know, I'm the only planner, and there's a lot on our agenda. the only planner, and there's a lot on our agenda, and we're very, very busy. And...
But some towns choose to hire that out and just do the whole master plan, you know, update. And I think the planning board needs to have a discussion about that, as to, you know, what chapters do we want to retain, because there's so many chapters that we have, and the majority of them are optional. Do they, do they still apply? You know? And then, the discussion of, do we think about going outside to do a complete rewrite of, of the master plan, and have a living document that is as of 2020?
2025 is the year that I targeted for a comprehensive update. And, you know, some communities and I'll...
Yeah, I'm just saying, or do we go one or two chapters as we've been doing every year, or at least one chapter, and what, and then having to prioritize them. Because they, each chapter should be updated every 10 years.
And that's also in our charter. And it's, it's recommended in the state statute. Our charter does call for that. So, you know, we're getting a little bit behind with that.
Did you have a comment, Council Castle?
I think most, I meant several, but I think that discussion just answered most of them. So, it sounded like there's a kind of a decision to be made about whether we should do a, there should be a comprehensive at this point in time, but it's already sort of targeted for about five years, well, seven, seven years out.
2025.
Yeah. And I was just curious what, you know, what the drivers should be.
I probably won't be here, I'll be honest about that. But we're going to keep saving the money as long as we can.
We're all crossing our fingers that we're around, right? But I guess, just in general, it'll be part of the planning, planning board's discussion about making that choice, right?
Yeah. And I had a discussion with the vice chair and the chair about it. And I think, we, at one point, we put together a spreadsheet of all the chapters, and, you know, what the status is and so forth. And I think we need to schedule this for a planning board agenda, maybe in October or November, so that we can move forward and hopefully get something going, maybe in January or in the new year.
So, I think, I think we should figure on trying to wrap this up in about six minutes or so, if we have enough time to transition.
Yeah.
Do you want to move on to the MS4?
I'll move on to, yes. As some of you know, the town of New Market is now part of the EPA MS4 program. And the MS4 program is a program that is aimed at addressing non-point source pollution that affects impaired water bodies. And this is a program that's been around for a while, but New Market just recently became part of the program because of census data that became available in 2010. And as of July 1st, we are now part of the program. And basically, it's, it's a five-year program where we need to come up with a storm water management plan that addresses a number of issues related to non-point source pollution. And on October 1st, we are required to submit to the Environmental Protection Agency a notice of intent, which outlines sort of our work program on how we're going to meet those requirements. And those requirements are outlined in a permit that was issued by the Environmental Protection Agency. It's a discharge permit. And it, and provides, there's really like six areas where we have responsibilities to EPA, to the public, to move forward with some of these initiatives. And just to give you a kind of an overview of what they are, it's public education, public participation, having good housekeeping measures in town facilities to make sure that storm water is not running into the waters of the United States, as they say in the permit, which is basically the Lamprey River and tributaries. And that if there are illicit discharges, or we have pollution issues, we need to identify them, we need to evaluate them, we need to come up with an assessment plan, and a strategy, a best management practice to ameliorate, if you will, those impacts. And what this translates into is dollar signs, and it's going to be a very expensive program, and maybe that might be a segue to Steve's thought, which is, there's currently an appeal ongoing of the MS4 program, which the town of New Market has embraced as part of...
So, the town, the town of New Market has joined, I want to say, probably close to 30 to 40 other municipalities in the state of New Hampshire to appeal the MS4 permit. The reasoning isn't because we disagree that we need to make sure that we protect the waterways in the, in the Great Bay and the Lamprey. It's, we don't believe that the permit that was written or distributed reflects the state of New Hampshire. It is pretty much a cookie cutter permit from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was issued on January 18th, 2018.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. I mean, yeah. 2017, which was two days before the end of the previous administration. So, there was concerns at the time that the new administration would lessen the regulations with a new permit, so the EPA issued it. We weren't expecting it. We were expecting it to be issued in July. And we, and this is not just us, but every municipality. So, that was kind of a surprise. As I said, it's, it's really focused on a more urban design than it is what fits the state of New Hampshire. We're not Massachusetts. We don't have that much impervious surface as they do. So, we are just trying to make sure that what fits, we should actually fit the state. Most states actually do their own regulation of the storm water. There are three states that opted out of regulating the storm water and asked the EPA to come in. Those states are Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and New Mexico. Massachusetts is now asking to leave to have their DES regulated. There is a group of municipalities across the state asking the same thing for DES in New Hampshire to do, and step up. And because we feel that our own Department of Environmental Services knows our, our state better than the EPA does, plain and simple. So, there's two ways that we're going there. One, we're saying, "Look, the permit doesn't fit New Hampshire. It fits Massachusetts." And secondly, DES, step up and regulate us through your agency and not through the EPA. Maine just switched, I want to say, three, four years ago, so right before everything was coming down, because they were, they were a fourth state that did it. The other 46 regulate their own. So, you know, there's some arguments, again, this isn't us against the MS4 process, or the storm, regulating storm water runoff. It's just we want to make sure it fits the state of New Hampshire. That doesn't mean also that the planning board shouldn't be moving forward with storm water regulations. We need to act as if what we have in place today, which is the MS4 permit that we have, we can always go back and change it if we get a, you know, a more advantageous permit for our state. If not, we still got to just move forward with what we have. So, we have the MS4 that the EPA issued. So, we'll wait until we hear what happens in the courts or mediation, but as of now, it's just, it's move forward as is.
I wanted to mention that we, the planning board has been working on updating its storm water regulations. In 2010, the planning board adopted subdivision and site plan regulations, which is sort of the first tier, if you will, of regulatory control over non-point source or storm water. And the regulations correspond to two aspects of the permit. We're required to have construction regulations in a place that will minimize erosion and sedimentation, which obviously has an impact on water quality. And the second part of it is post-construction standards, where the developers who build within the community have to install what they call best management practices, which is, which is designed to not only treat the flooding aspect of drainage, but is, they're designed to provide treatment of water quality, because there's obviously a connection between the two. And of course, the biggest concern here in, in New Market is Great Bay, and we have, in the permit, there are restrictions, and we have to comply with certain standards on nitrogen loading, which is already being done partway through the good work of Sean Gregg's office and the, you know, wastewater treatment plant work that's been done in the last few years. But the other aspect of it is that, that there's other types of practices that need to come into play that will minimize the impacts. So, the regulations that we're working on now, we received a grant from the Strat Regional Planning Commission under their setting sale program. And there was a subcommittee of four or five of us who worked on that. And so, we need to continue working on those. But I just wanted to let you know that that fits into the overall scheme, and we're moving forward on that parallel track.
And just so that it's clear, the planning board's authority is only over site plan review regulations, multifamily housing and subdivisions. So, we have nothing to do with private individual lots, grandfathered properties.
Single-family homes.
Or single-family homes or duplexes. So, if there's anything for, that the town is looking to pursue in that respect, that would be through, through other regulations or ordinances through the council.
So, we're kind of up against our time limit. So, if anybody has a pressing last comment they want to make, that's okay. I think we've covered a good amount of ground. I feel the whole process of having a joint meeting was useful in that we had a meeting of you representing the chair for the, for the planning board, and me for the council, and Diane and Steve, and we, you know, we had a meeting. I think the process, one of part of the things that you benefit through the joint meetings that we've described is that you also sort of have a review and a preparation for the meeting that's useful to sort of getting people thinking about the agendas and what we're trying to accomplish. So, I, I think we, we've talked about things we want to, both for the planning board and for the town council to accomplish over the next year, and, and we would be reconvening in September 2019.
Or we'll be before you before then with the ordinances.
That would be great.
If you want to share ideas at any point, do we have to wait all the way to next September, though? That really makes sense.
We have lots of public hearings. And you have a very good town council rep that every...
All right, we have a seat there. Okay.
Yeah. And, and it's important that they, that they really are the liaison to the planning board, that we understand, you know, issues that you want before the planning board, and that, in turn, Gretchen or Tony, right, who's the alternate now?
Gretchen and Amy.
Amy. Alternate? No.
I don't know.
So, maybe you don't have one yet.
I am the alternate.
So, they're also bringing back to the council issues, you know, before us that we need the council input on.
Yeah, and this was helpful, because this is the first, I missed last year because I was out of town, so it was helpful to kind of actually get a chance to meet with you also. And it's also important, because when you have the council representative, they speak for the council versus individuals as members of the public.
Sure.
Super quick. So, Diane sort of mentioned this earlier, and I know that she brought it up at your last planning board meeting, that I am the council rep to the Energy and Environment Committee, and we are looking for a planning board rep to that committee. It's a, it's a small group of us, but it's fairly, and it's new, but it's a fairly robust group. We're looking at a few different issues. One, we're pretty close to, I think, a municipal composting pilot program, and getting that off the ground. And then, the other thing that we will be researching and looking into is some solar opportunities in New Market. So, shameless plug.
Well, with that, I think, unless there are any other pressing comments, I think we'll have like a two-minute recess to break this meeting up. Can we do that?
Probably any more than that. He's got to get upstairs. Don't take any Apex, please.
Oh, oh, we're going upstairs. Okay.
Yeah.
Lost track of that.